This is Bo McFarland and you're listening to the Matt Ballaker Podcast.
Hello, fine people. Thank you once again for tuning into the Matt Ballaker Podcast. Today's guest is a longtime friend and an even longer time acquaintance. He's been a career high school teacher, college professor, stand-up comedian, writer, and is now running for a seat in the heavily contested Board of Education for Chino Valley Unified School District, trustee area two. Please welcome Bo McFarland to the program. How you doing, Bo?
Uh, better than I deserve. Thanks for having me. It's good to, good to see you, man. Always is.
Well, it's, it's good to have you in this, uh, this forum. I mean, I know you primarily from comedy and you're multi-talented and multifaceted, but-
I paid, I paid him to say that, by the way. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll take any endorsement or donation. But maybe one of the reasons we get along so well is kind of unbeknownst to me, we grew up, well, I mean, you're much younger, better looking, but we grew up pretty close to one another. Uh, what, what was your hometown, Bo?
Um, I primarily grew up in Encinitas, California, so just south of you, because you're in Carlsbad, right?
Yeah, so if, if you want Carlsbad but nicer, uh, go to Encinitas. So does that kind of encapsulate it well, Bo?
That's open to interpretation, but I'll, I'll, I'll take it. Yeah, um, I, Encinitas is a lot different now than it was when I was growing up there. When I was growing up, it was kind of like surfy beach bum, you know, funky groovy now. Now it's, uh, it's a bit, it's turning into kind of a Silicon Valley a little bit, but, um, you know, as you know, I, I think San Diego now and even North County San Diego, it's like the most expensive place in the country to live. Uh, it wasn't that for me when I was growing up, but it, it was nice. Yeah, it's, it's great near the beach. Can't complain. Can't, I'm very-
I mean, you're, you're not joking. Like, I think when we left, I, I left, you know, in the late nineties to go to move to LA, like, property value is probably quadrupled and the population doubled. So I think our leaving North County made it a more desirable place.
Yeah, exactly. As soon as we were out of there, yeah, everything got better. Um, and now we can't move back because it's-
No, because we're priced out. That's, that's, that's how it works. But, um, so what, what high school did you go to?
Um, my first year I went to La Costa Canyon High School and then I, all my friends were at San Diego Academy High School. So then I transferred there. Um, and then, so I was there for three out of the four years.
And what kind of things were you into when you were a teenager?
Um, yeah, and I mean, I, you know, I played sports. Um, uh, it was kind of like a, a, a rule in our, our family. So, you know, baseball, basketball, football primarily, soccer when I was a kid, which basically wasn't really soccer. It's just like a ball, you know, traveling with a, a crew of children chasing it, you know, but-
Babysitting on a field.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, and then I was, all my friends, ah, this is, man, this, this is blackmail material, but, uh, I, I was really into breakdancing and like underground hip-hop. So like, uh, my friends and I like, um, and primarily them, I just kind of followed along, but, um, started like a breakdance homeroom for our school. Um, and so that, I was like really into that, was never good at it. Um, I'm just very, I have a very Caucasian rhythm, so.
I mean, when I see you, I figure, you know, Irish guy, breakdancing is his strong suit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, if, uh, river dancing would be breakdancing, you know, then I'd be fine. But, uh, yeah, um, it, uh, so I was really into that and mostly it was just because my, you know, all my friends were and, um, and then, uh, yeah, I was, I don't know, I was really into like, like underground hip-hop and, and, uh, music. And then, um, I was also really into church. Uh, I, I actually grew up, um, I'm, I'm practicing Catholic now, but I grew up, um, in a very like evangelical home, uh, primarily, uh, went to a church. Uh, it was actually a Calvary Chapel in North County, San Diego, in, um, I guess technically it's Carlsbad, so, um, your area. And I was really active, like, you know, uh, like a youth group leader for middle school and, you know, went on like church mission trips a lot and, um, I was kind of, I don't know, found a lot of my identity there. Um, and then things kind of changed, um-
Dancing sessions?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
During your church retreats?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, poppin' luck for the Lord, folks.
Gospel B-Boy, yeah, yeah. Uh, breakdancing to Matt Redman or whatever. Um, but, uh, yeah, um, yeah, so that's-
Well, I, I wonder, I mean, it's, it's kind of a serious question because this was like the, the nineties or early two thousands and-
Yeah.
Um, around that time, and, and this isn't just in California, I mean, I think it's throughout the world. I mean, it's, it's a generation of kids, probably for the first time in American history where most didn't attend church. You know what I mean? Like, our parents' generation, it was, that, that was the kind of social hall. You had a lot of your cultural affiliations with where you worshiped. And then it became, you know, not like no one went to church, but it was probably far more common than not to kind of live agnostically. I mean, not, not that they don't have some belief in a deity, but I, I want to hear your point of view on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, but no, you're right. It, it was like this twofold thing where I, I don't, I don't recognize a lot of how life is now because growing up, there was tight church community and it wasn't politicized either. Didn't matter if it Republican, Democrat, like everybody, it, it, I mean, yeah, you might have arguments around the dinner table, but they weren't, you know, super contentious. It was kind of like at the end of the day, like, yeah, well, anyway, you know, what's for dessert, you know, let's, you know, we're still, um, friends. So, and that was within, that wasn't just in my experience in the church community, but it was also, like, I, I grew up in my neighborhood, like, we could just go out and play, go out at night, ride bikes around, play like giant neighborhood games of like hide and go seek or capture the flag. And there wasn't this concern over like, you know, that there's, you know, pedophiles, you know, around every bush, you know, about, you know, kidnap you. And so there, there was just a sense of like, not just community and safety, but a bit more freedom to, you know, I don't know, I guess speak your mi-, I guess freedom is, you know, you, there wasn't this fear of being canceled or having, uh, a religious or political belief that you said that could come back to bite you and make you lose your job or something like that. It was just a different time. And now sometimes I just feel like, um, I, I don't mean to be all doom and go, well, in my day it was so much. But like nowadays, it's just sort of, uh, I, I sometimes don't recognize the world we live in where, um, you know, ki-, kids, I, I like in my, in my neighborhood where I live now, like, I don't really see kids out playing, riding bikes around, you know? Um, most of the people I know don't go to church, um, don't, and, and so there's, I think, kind of an abiding sense of disenfr-, you know, disenfranchised, is that the word? Being disenfranchised and, and-
You're the teacher. I trust your judgment, yeah.
Oh, gosh, yeah. All right, yeah. I'm really making myself look good here. Uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, so it, it, it was definitely, it, it felt different. I'm not saying it was a different time, but it, it felt different than it does today. Uh, that's just my-
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it makes sense because it's, it's, it was kind of a countercultural upbringing in a way. I mean, and not like the weirdest thing ever, but you know, a little bit of, of a break from the norm. Um, but you didn't stay in North County your whole life. What, where, where did you, you know, move to?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I got out of Dodge a little, I know you moved to LA and then you were in New York for comedy and stuff. Um, I left, uh, in, like, so I graduated in 2003 and then went to Biola, which was a Christian liberal arts university in La Mirada, which is like South Los Angeles County. Um, and I was a humanities, uh, with an emphasis in English major there. Uh, made some amazing friends that I'm, I'm still in touch with today and they're still some of my closest buddies. But, um, yeah, it was kind of during that time that I also got, I, I, two, I mean, two things happened. One, like because I had been growing up so into church and pursuing a relationship with God, I, um, I got kind of involved in a, I, I guess you would call it the charismatic movement. Um, like, you know, focus on, you know, Holy Spirit, hands raised, um, you know, healing prayer, stuff like that. Um, and, and I'm not, to be honest, I'm not sure to this day how much of the miraculous that I, that was claimed to have been taking place was actually legitimate. I'm, I'm really not sure anymore. But, um, it was, it did at that time really blossom, uh, uh, a more, even more kind of spiritual passion in me. And ironically, at that time, I also became really disenchanted and disillusioned by evangelical Christianity. Um, it was, it, it was even at that time very, uh, politically motivated, like you had to, you know, you weren't a Christian unless you were a conservative, pro-war Republican. You know?
Yeah.
Which, you know, you read Jesus right on the mount. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't, it doesn't line up, right? Um, and, you know, it was basically, it was very much like, you know, if you're poor, well, it's your fault. You know, you're not working hard enough and God helps those who help themselves type of a thing. And, um, and also a very rigid view on, uh, Christianity in general. Um, you know, like not accepting of, uh, you know, Orthodox or Catholic or other Christian traditions. And, uh, it really, it was just too small of a world for me. And, um, I eventually started, um, kind of getting exposed to and involved in like the Catholic charismatic movement. And over time, um, my, my, my heart kind of led me into that tradition. And so I went through Rite, RCIA, Rite of Christian Initiation in the Catholic Church. And, uh, you know, since then have been a, you know, practicing Catholic. So, uh, that's kind of, um-
Yeah, it's not uncommon for college kids to either shun religion or maybe go way different, you know? But that you have a pretty nuanced, uh, spiritual journey. You know what I mean? I mean, not, not that it's not nuanced to your own life, but you know, it's like you went from kind of a more evangelical bent to the more traditional and apostolic, uh, focus, which, yeah.
Uh, and I think it's because also kind of like, and, and I know you're similar in a lot of ways. Um, I am, uh, not that I'm very super successful at it, but I am a creative person. I'm, I'm very visual, so I like art and symbol and mythology. And I, so I think ritual and liturgy also spoke to me and, uh, and I did not grow up with that. And so I think as I started experiencing that, I was like, oh, this is a, a more, um, kind of full body, like I'm more involved. There's a kind of a transcendent symbolic artistic experience, uh, that I can, that I can have. And, um, and maybe because I didn't necessarily grow up with that, it's what really, uh, impacted me. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it kind of becomes your own way of life. It's, it's not a result of what your parents taught you. It's, you, you've, you discovered your own path and, yeah, you and I met a, a long time ago, but it was through stand-up. And, uh, you're, you're one of the most creative, talented people I know, but I don't really know your origin story. Like, it's, it's not a very natural thing to pick up a mic and try to entertain some strangers. What, what compelled you to do such a stupid thing?
Yeah, right. I know. Um, I think, um, the first time I ever tried stand-up was actually in South Korea. I, uh, I know-
So cliched, the, the same old-
Like everybody else, you know? Uh, I, uh-
Get some kimchi and-
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, so, long story short, while I was in college, I went in, um, I did this, uh, summer abroad in, uh, China, in Xi'an and was like teaching a, um, uh, basically teaching an English class there. And then after I graduated, there was like no work. There, you know, I got out of college and it was right after the, you know, financial collapse. You know, this is like 2007, 2000, and then 2008 was the collapse. There was no job. Yeah, yeah, great.
Get out of this country.
Perfect timing. Yeah. Um, and I just like, uh, was working construction and just miserable. And, uh, I, uh, so I went, I'm like, well, I, I'll try to go back teaching English overseas. So I went to South Korea, was teaching, um, at basically like a hogwann, which is like a private middle school, high school. And, uh, I made, you know, a lot of friends in the expat community. There are a lot of like Americans, Canadians, Australians, New Zealanders, English folks in the area. And, um, I, obviously you make Korean friends. You know, I took Korean classes and everything, but you, 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 you know, you also gravitate towards, uh, people who share your sense of humor. And so, um, uh, there were like Western bars where they'd have like live music or, um, or stand-up comedy. And that was the, you know, I did like an open mic bombed, was awful. Um, uh, you know, they basically had to throw me out of the country. Uh, so, um, and then when I, I came back to the US to do, uh, go to grad school. And, um, while I was doing that, um, I started doing open, you know, I got, I just had that, that creative gene to want to try to write jokes and form them. And of course I sucked for a long time. And, uh, but I, after doing enough open mics, I started, you know, getting, um, booked at places and doing, eventually doing comedy clubs and venues and everything. Um, and, you know, and, and you know how it is when you're starting out, it's not like, it's not very glamorous at all.
It isn't ever glamorous.
Yeah, or, or ever, you know, you're, so, you know, I'm ba-, you know, if I'm getting paid, it's basically gas money, you know? And, uh, drink tickets. And so, um, but I met you, I actually went to a show at the Cabrillo Theater, I think. There, there was a stand-up comedy show and you, uh, you performed and then we talked afterward and you, you killed, obviously.
Oh, obviously. Yeah. Thank you for feeding, uh, for replying to the line of a gene.
Yeah, yeah, right. This is about you. Uh, and, um, and, uh, it was after that, I think, you know, we started corresponding and I don't exactly remember how, but like, a- as you know, it, it kind of works where like, people, a, a lot of people in the comedy community will help each other out. So you would give me a spot, you would get me a spot in a show, I'd get you a spot in the show. Eventually we're doing shows together, uh, going on the road to, you know, driving, you know, few hours away to do some random whatever, you know, and, um, and it, you know, bowling alley or whatever. Um, and, uh, that's how, from my memory, that's how we became, we became friends. Or is, or are we friends? Yeah, um, so yeah.
We're, we're officially friends. Sorry, I had to, my phone was ringing. But, um, it's, it's a weird community, but it's, it's a fun one. You know, and I think a lot of my friends from stand-up are probably, I'd call my most genuine because, like, there's no real pretense, you know what I mean? Like, like they've kind of seen you at your worst and, um, it's not like, it, it is-
Everybody's each other's therapist in a weird way.
Yeah, yeah. And it's like a shared experience that's pretty unique. And I think that, that's, that's what I enjoy about, but I'm curious, like, um, you mentioned your first couple of times, like everyone, and unless a line, you know, it doesn't go well. Um, but lots of people who try the first time never do it again. You know, what, what was it that made you keep going?
Um, I guess I had nothing else going on. Um, yeah, I think it was fun, um, and that helps. Um, and even, even when I bombed those first few times, if I got some laughs, I'd be like, okay, well, these work. And I'll throw up this and, you know, over time you obviously refine your craft. And again, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not like Shane Gillis or Bill Burr. You're not, you're not talking to a super successful comic, but, uh, at all.
Yeah.
But, right, of course. But, um, it, it got to the point where I figured out who I wa-, like who I was on, on stage and how to present myself in a way that was, uh, you know, authentic to who I was, but also was funny and, and worked and could get a crowd to, to like me. And then, you know, once you, once you do it enough and bomb enough, also you just become more confident up there. You're not afraid of it. And you're afraid, when you're up there afraid, the crowd feels it and you're, and, and everyone's uncomfortable. But then even if you're sucking, but you're kind of like okay with it, they start to like you, you know what I mean?
That, that's such a good lesson for everything. You know, like if you can, if you can handle the worst case scenario and you realize, okay, like, I'm not falling out of a plane, like I will survive this no matter how bad it, it gets. Like, life's not that rough.
Right, right. And, um, yeah, hu- hundred percent. So, and I, and I, once I realized like I, once, I think I, once I stopped mimicking the comics I liked and just started kind of being my, myself. Cause I, I was, I was always a, I always had a good sense of humor, um, even if I wasn't the funniest guy in the room. I loved to laugh and I lo-, you know, loved to have a good time with people. And, um, once I realized, my, kind of my, you, uh, you're familiar with this, but kind of my bent is I, I'm, I'm always, like a lot of comics, I'm always the butt of the joke. I'm very self-deprecating. And, you know, that disarms audiences and then they can laugh at you and with you. And, uh, yeah, and then that just started working and, um, I was very, very fortunate to, you know, have people start reaching out to me to do, you know, big, you know, big comedy clubs, you know, like you, uh, doing shows with you, you know, like the improv, the, the, the different improvs or the Laugh Factory or Comedy Store. Um, and, and then the cool, I think the coolest experiences for me in stand-up were getting, um, booked in other countries. So I got to perform at a couple of clubs in Iceland and, uh, in Ireland. Um, I had, I had friends and family in Northern Ireland. And so I'd gone out there a couple of times, a couple of times with my wife. And, uh, over time made friends with some Irish comedians and who, when they came out here, I got them into shows. Same thing, you know, exchange of favors. So then got to do, um, some clubs in, in Dublin as well. And that, so that, you know, that, that's one of those, uh, again, you know, it's, it's not like I'm famous or anyone knows who I am, but it was fun for me and it was kind of like bucket list type material. You know what I mean? Um, uh, just, you know, like you, I know you've, you've toured all around and you, it's kind of fun going to a completely new place, new crowd, new people and like, yeah, you, being in a foreign country or another state and, and sharing what you've worked really hard on to write that's come from you and then to see it, uh, received well is, is incredibly, uh, rewarding. So, as you know.
Oh, absolutely. So you were, uh, very uniquely qualified to, uh, to take on a project, which was super flatter, is super flattering. Uh, you and your partner, uh, did a fantastic job of adapting a book I wrote with Wayne Jones about Greg Giraldo, um, in, into a movie. And we don't need to go until like, you know, we have to have Russ on and we, we can do a whole episode just on that. But can you share with the audience kind of some of the specific challenges of taking something that's, you know, in, in written format that you can read in five hours and then adapting it to a visual format that you can watch in, you know, 90 minutes or so?
Yeah, well, you did, you and Wayne did a great job writing that book. Um, it's, you know-
Oh, please continue. Don't stop.
Right, yeah. We'll do this for the next hour. I'll, I'll just go through my, my list.
We'll jerk each other off over the rest.
Here's my favorite part of this page and this, um, yeah, so, uh, you know, read your book. I, I had always loved Greg Giraldo, um, obviously, and, um, read your book, really got to know the guy. And then, um, through your book and, uh, my, so my friend who's also a writer, uh, Russ Campbell, and again, we, we can have him on at some point if you want, um, but, uh, he's a very talented guy. He and I both read the book and we had written some scripts together. And, um, uh, we also, and this is thanks to Russ, but, um, we're, we're also staffed on a, um, on a TV show that comes out this fall. Um, so I'm going to do a little plug really quick.
Plug away.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we wrote on a show called Greatest Prison Escapes and it will air this fall, um, on A and E and Filmrise. So, um, anyway, keep an eye open for that. But he, when we wrote, um, an adaptation of your book, the biggest challenge was basically doing a chronological narrative. Cause your, your book, although your book's a lot of, uh, it's loosely chronological, but it kind of jumps appropriately so. And so I think to really show people the, uh, in a chronological, um, trajectory, the, the develop, the, the growth and development of Greg Giraldo, the lawyer, becoming a comedian, struggling with some intense, um, personal issues. And telling that story in a way that's fun and not just a bunch of, um, uh, snippets or, or vignettes, but a, a kind of a unified storyline that has three acts. And we see character development and kind of like a hero, a, a broken hero, you know, Joseph Campbell's hero's journey, you know? Seeing, um, you know, getting those beats down, uh, that definitely took some, um, took some work, but also your book made it very easy because there's so much material to work with. So, um, yeah, it was a lot of fun. And then it got, uh, optioned and, uh, uh, you know, Barry Katz, who you, you've interviewed. He, uh, he's come on as a producer. We have a couple of other producers from Buffalo Eight attached to it. And so, yeah, we're hoping it gets greenlit. So, yeah.
I, I can't wait. I'm gonna pick out a dress already and, um, when, when you guys are writing a, a script, what, if any, attention do you pay to like producing it? You know, cause like obviously you, if you're like, all right, we're going to make this an outer space, it'll be a billion dollar movie. I mean, is there any sort of awareness of that or do you just let your kind of creative juices flow?
Yeah, we're, because we're very low on the totem pole in terms of, uh, writing and writing credits. We are definitely budget conscious because, you know, if I'm, you know, if I'm writing the next Lord of the Rings trilogy and there's, you know, giant orcs and stuff, like that's an effects heavy thing and people are like, who the hell are you? Like, I'm not, you know, you're, you're not Peter Jackson, you know, you're, you're not Aaron Sorkin, dude. We're not throwing a billion dollars at you, you know? So, um, uh, but who knows what happens next year, you know? I might be, no, um, right. But, uh, yeah, so it, it, so ironically, so the other stuff we've written, it, you know, it's, it's definitely, uh, no, you know, absolutely no dependency on super big special effects. I mean, we have written one that's pretty ridiculous, but, um, the benefit with American comedian, you know, the Greg Giraldo story is that, um, it, I mean, it will take some money because a lot of it takes place in the nineties and so-
I know, that, that's a period piece now. It sucks.
Right, right. A period, it's a period piece. Yeah, that's true. Um, but yeah, long, you know, sorry, rambling answer to a very short question. Yeah, we're definitely very budget conscious bec-, because of where, where we're at in our careers. No one really knows who we are. And so, yeah, until this podcast airs.
Exactly. Well, a, a lot of people still don't know who Greg Giraldo is. And I wanted to touch, what, just a little bit more on the movie because you obviously put a lot of passion into writing this. And then it goes out to people who review it. Many of those are young, who were not even a, probably maybe never heard of Greg Giraldo before this. Um, and obviously you have to take opinions into account. But what's that process like and how, how do you kind of navigate whose opinions to actually take seriously and, and modify your work versus saying like, well, you can't please everyone. Like, I'm just curious how that process goes.
Um, thankfully it, like the, the people, you know, the producers and, um, script reviewers and stuff who've read this particular script, they, they all had some familiarity with Greg Giraldo. So, um, there, I think there was certain commentary on re- I think there was certain commentary on rewording certain jokes he made to um. Make them a li- a little bit more palatable to a a modern audience, um, so there was a little of that, but not too much because you gotta. You know, preserve the authenticity of who Greg Giraldo was, um, but I I know that like. Um, some of the, you know, feedback we got was stuff like. You can't have this joke today, you can't have this ju- you know, you gotta cut, you know, cut this, um, or uh, you know. The, the there'd be stuff on. On Greg's substance abuse struggles that we wanted to be. Honest about, but not. Not like feast on it so much to where we make it like this is what his life is about.
Yeah.
There was sometimes feedback where like, really dig, make this Requiem for a Dream, you know what I mean? You know, let's like really dig into the darkness and like how.
Mental illness sells, it's really popular.
Yeah, yeah, let's make this as depressing as possible about a comedian, you know. And uh, and and not, by the way, not our current producers attached, they're not. They are not at all like that, they're awesome, but um. The, the, yeah, initial uh, feedback, um, when we would, you know, submit it and um. Uh, pitch it was, you you know, basically change this into a. Really depressing uh. Sad story about the dangers of substance abuse and. We were like, that's not Greg Giraldo's story and that's the story's about and it's, it's, it does, and it doesn't honor him, so we. And and it's not honest, it's not on, it it really isn't, it's not, you know, the whole scope of his life, I mean, that was. One aspect of his life, but definitely not why people remember Greg Giraldo.
There there are a lot of people with substance abuse problems.
Yeah.
They're not him, you know, I mean, they're, that's.
Right.
Um, well, gosh, like, I wish I had a teacher twenty percent as cool as you, I mean, you. You write for TV, movies, you're a comedian, you've performed internationally, you do yard work, you're your husband.
Lots of yard work, man, I am uh, picking weeds, man, I am an old hat at that, yeah.
Well, you make my dad proud, because that was always my punishment, picking picking weeds, um, but now you you decided to uh, to run for school board, which. While admirable, w- why? I mean, you're you're a busy guy, you've got a lot on your plate, like.
Yeah.
What what motivated you to do this book?
Um, the, yeah, so. I think, I think giving a little bit of background on where I live in our community might help and. This does get into some pretty controversial ground, so I'll I'll do my best to share it in the way that I see it. Um, so I live in Chino, California, lived here for a few years now, my my wife and I. Um, moved here shortly after getting married and um. She is a teacher in the Chino Uni- uh, Chino Valley Unified School District, she's a high school English teacher. And um, I I do not teach in the district, um. Which is why I'm allowed to run, because if I did teach district, I would not be allowed to run, but um. There, over the last, pretty much since covid, um, the, there is a. Mega church in our community, um, it's a, it's a very um, extremist Christian nationalist church. And the the pastor is very, very um, very political and. Um, very, you know, radical right wing and and a a lot of what the church, the the church is very active. Um, in uh, policymaking to further a Christian nationalist agenda. Um, and so they, what they kind of realized with the guidance and support of the CNP. The Center for National Policy is uh, the way to turn uh, government. Chris- uh, well, their version of Christianity, um, the way to turn them back to that, or they say back to that. It it's funny because they they kind of say two contradictory ideas, one is that we are a Christian nation, our government should be Christian. And at the same time, Christianity is always under attack, it's, you know, the the left is trying to destroy it. It it's these two ideas that they're constantly putting out, so it's a little confusing, but um, they believed, since they believe anything. That is, you know, basically related to big government or um. Anything that's liberal, left wing or Democrat, that is evil and demonic, and they'll say that, they'll use those words, they'll say it's demonic. You know, that these people are demonic and they'll say that from the school board days, like in public settings, right? Um, and so they, over time, realized that they needed to uh. Take over school boards, this is happening in Temecula and Orange, other parts of the country, that's kind of. A new strategy by the the CNP and and, you know, the radical right, uh, Christian nationalists uh, agenda, so. Um, they uh, won a, you know, they're they're heavily funded, um, they won. The Chino Valley Unified School Board majority, um, they have four out of five seats right now, which means they essentially. Coached by the the church and coached by, you know, the CNP or Heritage Foundation. Um, they are guiding policy for the entire school district. And they believe, um, and I, again, I'm not, I'm not here to argue about beliefs or theology. Or cultural views that are influenced by religion, that's not my issue. Um, because I, you know, again, I'm, I believe in Jesus, I'm a, you know, practicing Catholics, I I I'm religious as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they very strongly believe that. Uh, homosexuality is evil and they will say the word, you know, that if you are part of the LGBTQ. Um, if you are tran- LGBTQ community, or if you're trans, they've used words from the dais publicly. Um, that you are, you know, mentally ill or even perverse, perverted, they've said that these people need. Non-affirming parental care, basically, um, you know, uh. What do they call it, conversion therapy stuff, so um, they they're very ideologically focused on. On this particular issue, um, and they want to really get at our schools to root out. This type of uh, expression, so they um. They instituted a forced outing policy, it was a mandate that they passed, um, they. Uh, the board passed because they have four out of five seats, it wasn't like they did a public, like the teachers and the teachers, you could come and vote on it, they just said. This is what we're doing and it wa- this forced outing policy required teachers. In the classroom to call uh, parents, report to parents. Anytime a student wanted to uh, change or go by a different pronoun or go by a nickname. That doesn't reflect their their gender, um, and which, that. That's actually a violation of California, uh, the California Constitution, it it violates the uh, California Equal Protection Clause. Violates the California Education and Government Code, um, it violates the California constitutional right to privacy. Um, the opposition to this has been characterized by the school board and and the. This mega church that is kind of running it, that we, the teachers and the teachers unions are all groomers. That are trying to turn all their kids trans, uh, that we don't, that we, um, they they call themselves like the parental rights. Group, you know, like that they're, that we are trying to hi- hide and keep secrets from families. Absolutely not, teachers are not at all, they they want families involved, they want parents involved, that we need more parental involvement, we need. Families involved, we absolutely want that, but what is not fair is to make teachers the new thought police. Where now I, i- i- if I'm a teacher or, you know, my my wife's a teacher, where now it's her responsibility to. Basically be monitoring everybody's, you know, gender and sexual expression and, you know, um. How, you know, if, it's it's not, it's not a odd for students to have a name on their official record. But then want to go by a a different nickname in the class, that's that's, that's not a strange thing, hap- happens all the time. Um, it's also, um, you know, teachers are mandated reporters, if we see a safety issue or something where we. Uh, we're detecting that a student is endangered in any way, it's our job to call Child Protect CPS and and make a report. By law, we have to do that, so this idea that we keep secrets, that we're trying to, the teachers are trying to, you know, cover up, cover up and. Uh, groom and harm students, uh, that's, that's not sure, I'm sure that's, that has happened before, I know that that has happened before. But that is not happening in our our district, um, and so this forced outing. Policy that basically threatened teachers with disciplinary action if they would not, you know, report if a. You know, student started going by a different pronoun, that's not a teacher's job, a teacher's job is to educate and to teach material, it's not our job. To be meeting with every student and trying to figure out where they are on the heterosexual homosexual spectrum and try to fi- and then be like. Oh, but you you moved a little, you moved a little bit to the trans, so now I gotta call home, um, and and the and the other issue is like, oh. If students don't. Want to share that with their parents, that is a conversation for, you know, the parents, counselors, school administrators and the student, right? That it's not the, it's not the teacher's job to now have to play thought police or or reporter and. And it made, it really dropped teacher morale and made, put teachers in this really difficult position where we now have to like. Assess, but is this student acting a little too gay or a little too trans, you know, like, and now I have to call home, you know.
Yes, I have a question on this and and. Because ob- obviously this is like a pretty minority position in terms of California as a whole, um, and and I I think. There was opposition, I I completely understand if a a teacher's job is not to like notify parents if you change a nickname or so, but. What happens if a parent asks, did my child change pronouns, for instance? Is the, are teachers forbidden from sharing that with mom or dad?
Yeah, so it'd be like a ca- it'd be like a case by case basis and um, it would be a, it would require. I- if a parent were to ask that, it require like a teacher bringing in a counselor consulting with. Administration, a teacher, many teachers, by the way, you do have the freedom to share that information, you can't, you you, a teacher can absolutely share. Yeah, he goes by different pronouns, she goes, but it doesn't mean the teacher is now required, the the new AB nineteen fifty-five Safety Act that was just. Passed into law, it doesn't make it to where a s- a teacher can, you know, face litigation or disciplinary action. If they are like, well, I I haven't talked to your son or daughter yet, I don't know the home, I don't know the home situation, like, I don't know if.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're safe at home, because there's, we've had stories where uh, you know, students get outed, the, a call goes home. A student gets out.
Oh, yeah, a- and and I, I mean, I think most sane people can agree, like. I don't want teachers knowing about the sexuality of kids, I mean, that's just, it just creeps the hell out of me, I mean, like, I want them to learn like. Reading, writing and arithmetic, you know, and it's like, if you're gay, straight or somewhere in between, I want you to have as good of an education. But I don't want so much discussion about like.
Right.
Gender ideology, especially at like elementary schools.
Yeah, exactly, and and then, you know, they'll, the other, the other side will kind of say. And it's all very, in my experience so far, it's all been very religiously motivated. W- which is, you know, basically like, well. My my son or daughter is not allowed to be gay, and so I need to know if they are. Well. I I I was talking to an individual and I shared a, I shared a similar, I shared a story that I experienced, so at my school, uh. Several years ago that I teach at, we had um, two uh, two young girls, this is high school. And they came from a very conservative Muslim home and they were. Uh, you know, they had to, as a rule of their household, they had to wear hijabs, you know, a headscarf, right? And so, but when they would come to school, right, they would take their headscarf off. And sometimes put makeup on and they wanted to uh, you know, basically just, I I guess fit in more and. They just didn't want to uh, do what their parents made them do at home at school. And this is a, this is a a religious conviction, right? Is it, so so then the pa- the parents want to know, oh, is my child, when she comes to school. Is she taking her headscarf off? Is it the teacher's job? Right, so you have to reveal information that would get them in trouble at home based on their religious convictions, right? If teachers, if we start, it's a slippery slope, so if we start making these laws and mandates that are. Um, reflective of, you know, religious convictions in public schools, private school, you know, do whatever you want, but in public schools, right? Because in in this, in the the United States, we are based on our constitution, uh, you know, a secular nation, um. Public institutions are, you know, prohibited from making laws respecting the establishment of religion, so. It's not my job to be a religious police, whether you're Muslim, Christian, you know, as a teacher, like, would you want it to? Would you want a board in Dearborn, Michigan, one of the highest Muslim populations in the United States? You know, making school mandates based on Sharia law, no, you you wouldn't, so it's, it it becomes kind of a slippery. Slope here that um, that, and the, a- and also it was. Basic violations of the California Constitution and now it's against the law to force teachers to have to do this, so the board. The school board has uh, resolved to fight this, they've, the the big issue, your original question, why I decided to run is. The board would not back off on these violations uh, of of what are now law. And what were violations of the California Constitution, they, um, so the Attorney General Rob Bonta. State of California, uh, because they were viol- you know, violating California Constitution. Opened up a lawsuit against them, they, the school board used district money. To hire, you know, very expensive legal team, we're almost up to one point two million in legal fees and now. The school board has opened up a lawsuit against Gavin Newsom, uh, Rob Bonta and the Secretary of Education, Tony Thurman. Um, and so from just a fiscal aspect, this, the the board of. The Chino Valley School Board has been really uh, financially irresponsible and all this money. Up to one point two million of taxpayer dollars that should be going into the classrooms, that's what this money's allocated for. At the school board, at the district level, is going to lawsuits, you know, and that. Um, and they have, you know, dedicated themselves to continuing to fight this and they're now breaking the law and. Um, and they're using district money to do the taxpayer money to do that, to fight their own little, you know, crusade. Um, and so that's one issue that I saw, like, that's, that's not good governance, um. The other, the, so one of the other issues too that is also very slippery is they. Instituteed a panel to bring book bans into the district, to ban books that they deemed. Um, sexually obscene or, what was their quote, um, contrary to moral and ethical standards. Generally held by the community and s- which is very much open to.
Very vague, yeah.
Um, they also believe that, they also believe that we had all these books teaching critical race theory. Our our district does not teach critical race theory, that's, that's why, you know, we don't, and also, yeah. I, of course, based on wanting student learning objectives, you know, established by the state. Like you said, we want to teach our kids reading, writing, arithmetic, we want them to learn and be educated, I don't want. There'd be no way we'd be teaching something like Fifty Shades of Grey or, you know, like Japanese anime porn or something in the class. It's based on their religious views on what is sexually obscene, so maybe mention. Of a gay relationship in a book or mention of a trans person or whatever they deem is not, um. That is contrary to the moral and ethical standards of the general community, well, what's the general community, you know? of the general community. Well, what's the general community, you know? Not, um, you know, there are, you know, basically there's educational codes. There's learning objectives that are established by the Board of Education, um, that stu- that teachers, uh, have to teach. And if there is literature or material that doesn't, uh, fall under that, then we don't teach it.
Mm-hmm.
What, when the board now, based on their own religious convictions, decides what books should be banned because it doesn't fit their religious or ideological perspective, that again is a very slippery slope, like down the road. Again, to use an example, what if you're in Dearborn, Michigan? And there's a majority Muslim Board of Education that doesn't want mention of, uh, things that they deem are not in line with Sharia law to be taught in their schools, right? That where, where do you draw the line? And, um, and, and then the other aspect i- is, well, a couple of things. I mean, our, in the last couple of years, Chino Valley Unified, we're at like a, um, 80%, 87% graduation rate. I want to get that up. Uh, you mentioned reading, writing, arithmetic. Uh, we're at, uh, for reading proficiency, we're at 38%. For math proficiency, we're at 27%. That, that needs to go up. And our board is not focusing on student learning outcomes. They're focused on this culture war.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, that needs to stop. And, um, teacher morale in our district is very low. We have the most teacher vacancies of any surrounding district. We, we have teachers leaving all the time, going to new districts because our, the pay is not competitive. Working conditions are not competitive. We get, teachers in this district get paid far less than any other surrounding district. Um, meanwhile, our superintendent has had two raises in the last year. He's making half a million dollars a year and our teachers are barely making a living wage. And, um, a lot of students have just long-term subs. You know, they'll go into English class and the, and the long-term, there's a sub who basically is having to show up every day and isn't prepared, doesn't have teaching material and it's like, and, and it's because there isn't, uh, an animist. The, the school board vocally hates the teachers union. They're very vocal, they're very, um, upfront about that. They will not cooperate with the ACT Association of Chino Teachers. And they, there's this antagonistic relationship. And we need to make, a- and, and it shows in the school board meetings because you have, that you get the, the school board and their supporters, they get all these people from outside of the community. They don't even live here. Some of them have even come from like Arizona. They're, you know, they come with their signs that say teachers are groomers and, you know, uh.
I, I'm sorry, I won't bring that next time. That was.
Okay, yeah, no.
I misunderstood the purpose of the rally. Sorry.
No, no, it's, it's all right. It was great. It was great, uh, you know, color fun. I really liked that.
Thanks.
Yeah, so, a- and so, you know, we've had teachers and, um, even parents, uh, yelled and screamed at and assaulted and in our, you know, in our parking lots and within the school board meetings. And so I want to, you know, my, a little phrase that we are liking to use in our campaign is, I want to make school board meetings boring again. Let's, yeah, let's get the money, let's get the money back into the classrooms, focus on student, you know, outcomes and getting our test scores up and our graduate, graduation rate up. And, um, let's start doing school business again, not culture wars.
Very nice. So where, where can people learn about you or whether they want to support?
Yeah, thank you. Um, that, my website, my campaign website is beaumcfarland.com. It's B E A U M C F A R L A N D dot com. And yeah, my campaign's really grassroots. I'm running in trusty area too. I don't, I barely have any money, so I'm trying to raise money. I'm taking donations just from any, anybody who wants to support the cause. So, uh, but my website does have like basically all my, you know, pol- you know, policy objectives, what I hope to achieve when elected and, uh, they can kind of, and I have, you know, bio and has a, um, my wife's very pretty, so it makes me look better on there. So.
That, that's very true. Does it have a list of upcoming shows?
Oh, unfortunately, no. And I even, uh, my, you know, I even took my standup comedy video, you know, videos that have been taken, we do standup. I even, uh, put those on private on YouTube.
Smart.
Being until I win, just so no one can like take a clip out of context and.
People would never do that, not in this.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, for the three people who watch the videos. Um, but, uh, yeah, so my we- yeah, please, I would love anyone, uh, anyone and everyone who would want to support would love you to visit my website and donate. Even, even a dollar would help. So, um, yeah, so anyway, yeah, thanks for letting me plug that and, and share kind of, um, what this campaign's about.
I appreciate that. Well, Beau McFarland, you're always welcome. Thank you for joining us and please come back soon.
Matt, I love you, man. Thanks so much. Really, really appreciate you letting me come on. So thank you.
Thank you for listening to this episode of the Matt Ballaker Podcast. To learn more, please check out mattballaker.com and encourage your friends to like, subscribe and share. Really appreciate it.